We're going to open the May 13th Selectmen's Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment with our Highway Superintendent at 7:10. The first thing on the discussion on the agenda is the appointment to the Town Administrator Screening Committee. We've lost one member and it has been suggested to several of us that we might like to appoint back a seventh member. I believe we've had Bob Conry. You spoke to him or someone spoke to him to say he is willing to serve.
Yeah.
He's the Finance Director for the School District. And also, it was suggested to me to ask Tim Wheeler if he was interested in being a part of this committee and since it was a short-term responsibility, we have those two considerations or we could leave the committee as is. Does the Board want to share any opinions on this at this point?
I think we should appoint somebody. I think either of those are valid choices.
Okay. Peg?
Same. If people are willing to help, then we should go with one of them.
Okay. I agree. I think that I'm fine with appointing a seventh member. And we're lucky to have two people that have come forward to volunteer. And this is because we lost the school superintendent who could not fit it into his schedule, the dates that were being picked that most people could make and he could not. So, feedback from people or I could share mine?
I was just going to say, I think, while I would love to see someone from the schools and I think going forward, I would almost like to see that as a mandate for any sort of committee that's hiring the TA in the future. I think having Tim Wheeler on as a member of the Town Management Study Committee who has already looked at how this process is supposed to go would be very valuable.
Agreed. Well, no, I mean, Mr. Wheeler's lived in town. He's on the planning board. I mean, he understands what's going on in town.
It's getting too easy.
Well, no, I just think that his insight would be valuable.
Yes.
Because it's a town and you, to me, having someone who has been in town and lived in town makes a world of difference.
Yeah. And I agree. And I guess that makes it pretty easy. One of the reasons I was thinking that it might be, we might be better off having Tim is because we did lose Judy Boomen originally too. And she had some
Knowledge.
Knowledge, you know, that would help the TA as far as, you know, what has happened in the past and that kind of thing.
Yeah, except we have Eloise who is basically
We do.
The encyclopedia of all things Berlin, so.
Yeah, well, that too. But you might need a couple people. Everybody has a different, brings a different perspective to the table.
And would we appoint Tim Wheeler?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a, sorry. We have an FY '18 Webmaster reimbursement for $99.99 from 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Article 27.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, it was just highlighted. And we have a bill schedule for MRI for $6,500 from October 2018, Special Town Meeting, Article 2.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trish, I didn't ask you about any additional feedback when we talked about the TA.
Thank you, no, but that's a relief, I think, to have Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
I think it's going to fit.
I said I would ask you and then I
Totally forgot.
But you would have spoken up if you had anything additional, correct?
I probably would have, yes.
Okay. Well, good. Good to know.
You'd think.
Yeah. I also, alright.
It is a relief, thank you, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, we've got amended, no, discussion, why don't we just go to number four? Amended all alcohol license, A-B-C-C approved manager for Regal Cinema.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dave, come on down.
Digging the beard, by the way.
Two more weeks, it'll be gone.
For the summer?
So, you want to hear the story?
Me too.
A good friend and mentor of mine named David LaStella, always had a beard and mustache his whole life. He was born on April 11th. It's also the day 11 years ago he took his own life. So, every day from April 11th to Memorial Day, I love my beard.
That's a great tribute.
So, that's that.
Good for him.
For one year. Shaved his head and cut his beard off and got contact lenses and went to a Halloween party and nobody knew who he was. It was unbelievable.
It's a great tribute.
Thank you.
Alright, so you have something you want to share with us?
Well, I did, I only have my one copy.
Okay.
I sent you the electronic version. I'll just pull it quickly.
Any appointments, Chris? There's copies for you in the folder, the very first yellow folder, the whole folder.
To your left.
Whole packet. Yep, keep going.
No, I think they might have, no, this is the stuff
Oh, it's an appointment you have at your right.
Yeah, I moved them, sorry.
Do I?
Are you taking it down?
We can squeeze someone out of the budget. It's not thermite either. So, we closed out a snow budget. $25,000 over, which is $25,000 less than what it normally is. We hosted a chainsaw class, which was pretty fun for two days. We had two other towns coming. We held it at the Highway Barn. And this week on Thursday is the second part of that class where we do hazard tree mitigation, which is more of what we do, I mean, in a storm or, you know, disaster. We're not felling trees that are standing, we're trying to clean up a disaster. So, that's the second part of the class that's coming up Thursday. Not only is it fun, it's very educational and very eye-opening. So, we put all our snow stuff away, hopefully we don't need it, although they're predicting snow slightly north of here for this evening. We're doing mowing when we can. Obviously, with all the rain that we've had, it's been a challenge. And the roadside edging, we're having some issues with washouts, but not too bad. Public safety building up front, I don't know if you noticed that Sharon and Brian did that.
Excellent job.
Shout out to Sharon, she paid for most of that treary flowers.
Do we have money to reimburse?
Well, we've shared expenses, but some of the stuff, we had money. And Tom has put up some money, but she was bent on getting those shrubs that are curly and she wanted them, so she paid for those. They were very expensive.
Shrubs that are curly.
Did you look at them?
Yes, I saw that.
She wanted them, she paid for them.
Okay.
A new flag was put up on the common.
Nice.
We've been working with conservation. We redid the parking area on Lyman to increase the parking area. We're going to do Soy Hill next if it stops raining. And we're also working with conservation to redo the access to this field, which I don't know what they call it, at Pleasant and Central.
The, was that the one right across from Tommy and you?
I think so, yeah. And I don't know if I've ever heard of it.
Yeah, so there's a ramp that goes down into that field. They'd like to make it a little less steep, a little more gradual so people could gain access a little easier.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for working with conservation.
Yeah, no problem. We'll work with anybody.
Awesome.
Alright.
Any questions?
No, I saw the street sweeper go by. The streets look good in town.
Well, that's part of that, is not using sand. Huge part of that.
It sounds like that worked out really well.
It does work out well. It's not a set it and forget it. It takes three to four years to get a program dialed in, but it works. It's the right thing to do.
Streets look good. Thanks.
Thank you.
When do you start your six to two shift? When it stops raining?
Six to four. They've already started last week.
Done that. Awesome.
We also, Cheryl, you want to come up or do you want to just talk about the suggestion that you had made about we were going to include Dave in the conversation too if we could?
Yes, I, every day I drive by to and from work and I notice that there'll be, you know, the other VC circle and the large rotary, there's, they've put some gardens in there and they haven't been weeded since the gardens have been established and the weeds are now taller than everything. And I was just wondering if there's a way to find a way of getting that taken care of, whether we have volunteers or, like you said, seniors
Seeing your work off, yeah.
Work off, just to clean it up and put bark mulch or even just take away the gardens altogether that are at the large rotary.
Are you talking about the big one or?
The big one.
Okay.
It's got three gardens that just, and there's some trash that's stuck in between the weeds right now.
There are gardens in there?
There were some perennials, I think, weren't there?
There were perennials that, I think it was put in there, I don't know if
Couple of years ago?
River Bridge donated and made those three gardens at the time and they donated the plants and then that was that.
Yeah.
Nobody's maintained it and I don't expect the highway boards to maintain it because I think they have enough to do in town. I did notice in another town where they have adopt, like a garden and you have a company or something that would pay a specific amount of money and they would adopt that garden, maybe you put the bark mulch down and then they have a sign there that tells, you know, almost a little advertising for them, but it helps to keep it clean too, so.
Yeah.
But there's just something that can be done.
Would you be?
You come into town and you see that and it's not that pretty, you know? And then also the one at the corner of Central and Pleasant, they do a wonderful job Memorial Day getting it ready, but then over the summer, no one's weeding it also. So, it just sits there and then the weeds take over by the fall, so.
That's the area you were just talking about for conservation.
Yes. I mean, it looks beautiful for Memorial Day, but then no one's there all summer to maintain it.
Right.
So, just something.
Would you be interested in pursuing an adoptive thing? Would that be something you'd be interested in driving?
I mean, I could look into it and see how it's handled at the other town and figure something out like that, but I didn't know how it would work for the Select Board, whether you would want the seniors to do a work-off, you know, a program or
That was just thrown out there as
You know, they go and they weed it weekly or something like that, just to, or you have, I don't know if you have, I know in Boylston, they have kids that work over the summer for Boylston and, you know, they do mowings and weedings in town. I don't know if you guys have that at all, but.
Well, we used to do, there used to be, they would contact Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and see whether they were interested in doing, for example, I know they probably had them do the front of the school where they have the garden.
They do the library actually too, I think, the Girl Scouts do.
Mm-hmm.
But I think too, you always need somebody to sort of, sort of drive it and make it happen, even if we had work off, I think you'd have to have somebody who's sort of organized or
Right, I mean, I could help with that and organizing, maybe someone to go down weekly just to maintain those.
And then reaching, the other part would be reaching out to businesses potentially to sponsor and donate.
Right, right. I think in one town, they do, they adopt a planter. They got rid of the gardens and they just have it, bark mulch, and they have one planter there. And then they have the flowers and stuff like that and they don't, they don't do the gardens pretty much anymore. They try to keep it simple, you know, so they're all pretty much the same, but, you know, it's something if we could look into, it'd be great.
You could talk to, if the Economic Development Committee, Peter might have some ideas about, like, businesses that could sponsor, like maybe ECO develops or something.
Right, 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 yeah. So, I mean, I could work with anybody that's trying to figure out something out, but.
That would be wonderful, because this is not the first time that this discussion has come up and I've actually sent over, there's like a Massachusetts program on this and there's a lot of communities, like you said, who already do do this and sort of have a model for it, but nobody's actually stepped up and wanted to do it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, it would be wonderful if somebody actually wanted to sort of lead it.
Sure, I could try and look into it and see what I can find out, so.
I did happen to talk to Matt Senni last week too and he said, you know, whatever he can do to help.
Well, he can pick up some of the trash.
Oh, I text him and he knows.
He's aware of that.
I mean, like I'm seeing boxes out there and
And he might be the first person to visit for donations for flowers.
That's true.
Could be. But he just wanted to, you know, let us know. And is there anything you want to suggest or add?
No, I think the planter idea with the sponsorship is a great idea. I think the first year is kind of difficult to get it going, but once it's established, I don't think you'd have any problem finding people to do that.
To do that, yeah.
Yeah, so just let us know what you need from us.
Sure, okay.
And I can email Peter too. Or you can just send him a quick note.
Sure.
Okay.
And you can include me and I think I've emailed you on the board, so just include me in that and I can look into it and see what I can find out.
Awesome.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Before I go, I'd just like to add that we do have a co-op student starting a week from today from Keefe Tech.
Oh, fabulous.
And I think once school is out, he's going to stay on for the summer until school starts up again.
Great. Will he be mowing or anything?
He can run a push mower, but not a riding mower. That's considered hazardous equipment.
He's how old?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. We had, one more thing I think we were going to touch base with you on is the, a couple of issues that came up last meeting from Dennis Bartlett.
Ah, yes. Those trees, the sign
Sign enforcement, but I think that was a building inspector issue.
The other piece of that that I did find out is you can't actually, we don't own the light poles and that sort of thing, so those are not our jurisdiction and there's been actually lawsuits and stuff that have not gone in the town's favor, so that is not something that we can actually address or touch, we can't.
I think we were waiting for the building inspector to respond, were we not?
Possibly, but I'm just sharing the information that I have. Those poles are not the town's poles. Those belong to National Grid and all those other folks.
Right.
We can't do anything about the signs on those poles.
Okay, well, alright. And then the other, the other issue was a, the enforcement, yeah, the enforcement letter sent in October 2012, I think. Were you made aware of this?
No.
Thanks, Cheryl. See ya.
Actually, Jim brought it to my attention. I know about
Yeah, you've probably heard of it from Jim, but can I just give this to Dave?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we should let him have some time and readdress this next week.
Yeah.
Or when he comes in the next time, I don't think, I mean, it's been out there for quite some time, probably the next time he comes in, it's soon enough.
Okay.
What do we do about that?
We're looking to you for
How do you enforce that? You know, you go and rip it out? Is it, you know, no?
And then you can't throw it away, because it's not your property.
Well, it's, I mean, the next time you're plowing
Get a little close?
Well, no, 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 I'm saying
That's exactly where I went with that, so, yeah.
No, no, I was just going to say that
Can you get it done?
Kate, please. You know, when, there wouldn't be any reason to file a complaint if something did happen.
Yeah.
Not to get a little close, but.
Do you see any issue with
Well, I don't, but if we don't act on it, it sets a precedence, right.
Okay. I'm just, we haven't acted on it in how many years is that?
Quite a few, yeah.
I think there was something else that came out up in between.
Twelve, 2002.
They claimed that the town did damage their curbing.
Okay.
And we said, no, we didn't and
And it was the end of it.
Well, not just, no, we didn't, but that, they had no witnesses and no reports to it. They admitted that they didn't even see a town. So, they put a claim against their own insurance company, whatever happened as a result of that. The town was never really, at least I know of, they didn't seem to go after Maya for reimbursement. But it is not just curbing, it's also trees
Right.
And gravel, landscaping. And the trees have matured now over the past six and a half years.
So, does it prompt another letter?
Yeah, you would have to use another letter, because that one's not fresh anymore.
Correct. Okay. And we are on firm ground in saying it's not supposed to be there.
Right, but once again. Probably.
That's just what I'm asking, is, I mean
The town does have the right to keep clear its right of way.
I know, but you'd have to go around to every property throughout the town and be like, you're over, you're over, you're over.
Yeah, I sort of feel like it's like, we said no, we said no again.
It's a tight quarter.
So, I guess we're looking
I can just draft another letter and knock on the door.
Okay.
Probably know what the result is, but.
Do you want me to refresh the same letter, pretty much, or do you want to ask Town Council?
No.
I don't have a record that Town Council was asked last time.
Do we have, like, what specifically they're violating? Is that referenced in there? What they're violating?
For infringing, I guess we'd have to go to measure it. I'm sure there's no surveys on any of that property, so.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking and it seems like if we're going to insist on enforcement, that we need to indicate to them what we're, what they're violating specifically.
Let me go over there with Jimmy and try to establish a
Well, you can have this if you want.
Okay.
Just take a look.
Yeah.
Kind of like you did with the water guy. And then it's pretty indisputable stuff.
Jim's got a memory that he can remember all the things that have come up over the years, I'm sure, or Mary can dig them up for you if you'd like. You need to look back.
Thank you.
Alright, cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Smith.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Three, let's see, number three, discussion. We are very tight on our legal services budget and I believe it's the 22nd or 23rd of May that they have scheduled a meeting to discuss the reserve fund transfer. And I guess the discussion here at the table would be to whether we need to curb the use of Town Council until after. What, is there a
Well, unless and until they approve a reserve fund transfer, because you are out of money.
We are out of money.
And I didn't actually raise this. June brought this up before she went on her trip.
Okay.
She said, you know, just a heads up, that you're now spending money that you don't technically have.
Okay.
That would also go for Weston and Sampson, LSP Services for Maplewood.
Well, I mean, do we have anything that we know of that's scheduled to happen in the next
Week and a half.
Yeah.
I don't know what pending
ZDA.
Yes, CBA, but I think CBA was going to have their next meeting in June, correct? It's June 12th, I would say.
If you don't tell them, I don't know what they are doing, like conservation, for example. Oil cash, conservation's private, paid through conservation funds. I just don't know what they're all working on. They're still billing if they're working on a project.
Yeah.
So, can we just send a letter to the department heads and to KP Law and the other law and just say
I would send it to the legal service providers, if that's what you wanted to do, not to the department heads, because they're not supposed to be seeking Town Council, but things that are ongoing that you've already let go.
Well, and I question whether CBA may be, because the attorney was at the last meeting and they may be requiring advice between now and the June whatever meeting, June 12th or whatever.
Can we find out before we make any judgment?
Well, you're going to be meeting before June 12th. You have one meeting before their June, May 22nd, FinCon meeting to discuss a reserve fund transfer.
Mm-hmm.
Is this something we can just wait until after FinCon meets?
You're spending money until then, yeah, you're still spending money. Even Town Meeting, you knew that you were out of money. I mean, you can't not have Town Council there, but I'm just saying, that's not my point. June's point is just that the money's already spent, overspent.
Absolutely.
And she feels it's a less than until, not just, you know, but that's her.
And the request that we made was for $15,000.
I think so. I don't know if that's enough, but
Probably not quite till the end of the year, but
We kind of knew that wasn't enough.
Yeah.
Because didn't we have some left over too? We were going to add them.
Well, here's, but we haven't got, we hadn't gotten the bills for April or March.
Right, so we were looking at potentially $21,000 that we could spend. And I think that's why we asked for 15, because we had some that wasn't spent.
Yes, well, it says, present balance is $55,009, however, that was $429.
So, a month.
Yeah. So, it may very well be gone.
Yeah.
I can't say for sure unless you know.
Oh, the money's gone. We have, there's a bill
Okay, there's a bill, that's right.
That's out of your control.
There was a bill that was just a little bit more than this, $55,009.
Yeah, there's
Right?
There is at least one bill waiting since that.
Okay.
Which I think it's two. I think it's the KP Law and
And where, when is that?
The Wednesday.
May 22nd?
What I do know is if we
Two Wednesdays, one Wednesday.
Don't use legal services for like the Weston and Sampson and that sort of stuff, it's going to cost the town a lot more money in the long run than
Well, Weston and Sampson's not really a legal service, but they're under legal, yeah. Okay.
Just continue on.
How about we table this until after their meeting?
Until the 22nd or whenever our next meeting, which would be the
Wednesday afternoon.
27th and 28th, be the day after Memorial Day.
Right. All the weed meat, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Put across being incurred within those couple weeks.
They will be. Maybe we'll need to make an adjustment to the request then.
I'm just, I guess I can't totally anticipate what, what FinCon is going to do, but my anticipation is they recognize that we need to pay legal services for, and it's an awful lot of work to go through to stop this and restart it. and it's an awful lot of work to go through to stop this and restart it.
Wait a minute, what is this? This one, yours. Is this Lisa?
I just, it's mine. I don't use.
Okay. So this is the, where we are.
Yeah, there are two orange entries. There's two orange entries, right? So those two orange are, are in hold, because there's no funds.
Yeah, because it's like sixty-three, four-ish.
Okay, so the preference is to wait until the day after Memorial Day, correct? We may, I mean, we may need to just adjust the request at that, well, no, be the meeting before that.
And I'm not saying that we, you know, approve any use of legal services that's not ongoing, but I, I don't, you know, the whole stopping is a headache for everyone.
Do you want the, do you think that the department heads or, need to be notified, or just?
We, already they have to ask.
Right.
Right, so we don't know of any additional, however, there probably is some ongoing CBA things.
I think as a courtesy, I don't see anything wrong with just sending out a quick email to be like, hey.
To the department heads.
To the department heads.
Yeah.
You know, hey, appreciate if you could just hang, hang tight, write your list down. We'll let you know, but for now, we gotta stop.
I'll copy you and FinCon.
Is that okay?
That, that's fine. Like I said, I was more just, you know, things that are ongoing.
Correct.
It could potentially cost us more money if you stop them and start them again to be considered in progress.
And if you hear that there are any issues such as that, where they're in the middle of something and they don't want to stop, could they just let us know? You know, that kind of thing, meaning.
So you're telling department heads to don't incur new projects, but you want the projects that they're in right now.
No, is this an issue for anyone? This is our guide, that we think, you know, we're not gonna do any additional legal.
New.
Right.
Okay, ongoing is ongoing.
If this is, if this is a real issue for somebody, please let us know.
Okay.
Something to that effect. Okay. That take care of number three?
Yes.
Um, we have letters of appreciation to nine Toronto Regional High School student volunteers who provided the childcare on Monday and Tuesday of the annual town meeting.
I'm gonna prove to nine, I just left one letter. I'll, I'll just scan it and send it to everybody.
Okay. So the, just so the public knows, it was Haley Barrett, Grace Curtis, Mia Fantasia, Sydney Fuller, Rebecca Holmes, Lucia Lundberg, Carol Lyons, Julie Marai, and Sarah Young. Um, we want to thank them very much for helping to provide the childcare at the school during town meeting.
We'll plan better for snacks next year.
And also a shout out to Julie Lee, who is down there doing childcare right now for the election.
Uh-huh. Um, so do I hear a motion to approve the letter for Mary to send to volunteers? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's very nice. It'll look good in their portfolio for college.
Okay. Um, we've got the, do we really want to, do we want to announce these, or are they?
They are typically announced at this meeting, and they're giving certificates at the, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some, I don't know how the schools here do it, but sometimes they have a separate awards night and sometimes they do it during graduation. I don't know, how does Toronto do it?
I think it's during graduation.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it may, and I, you're correct, I think we've announced it before the graduation. Some of the scholarships and that kind of thing are a surprise to the.
Right.
The recipients.
I'll prepare, um, gold seal. Eloise puts the town seal on some certificates for you all to sign.
Okay.
Nice.
All right. So, um, we have three, which we have voted to give equal amounts of the, the scholarship money to. And it is Catherine Kraszewski, Jennifer Norwald, and Sophia Bela Nozick. Congratulations.
Open that award.
Hmm?
The Mabel Felton Marble.
To a graduating female high school senior further in her education.
Yes.
I know, but.
I know, just so people at home know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
A very generous annual donation by Sylvia Marble.
See, I'm gonna remember this next year, and I'm gonna have Roger come up into the announcement.
I can do that.
Cool.
Okay.
And I'll put that on Facebook and.
Okay.
Send to the Clinton item and.
Good, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Um, next we have approval of affordable housing rent rates, the Rockwall Apartments, which is down on River Road West. Um, so our vote this evening needs to be to vote to approve the rents.
You can say so approved, because it's all doubly guck, bunch of dick that Ellie pulled off of the web. And, um, DHCD says they approve of those rates, which are basically central mass Worcester County rates for affordable housing.
Okay.
That's what the rents will be set at.
Is this the yellow line?
Mm-hmm. It's that page, and then you can also see the blue tab is specifically Worcester County.
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a sign, a signature page?
Nope, I'm just literally gonna send an email back.
Just has to be in the minutes.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, uh, annual town meeting update.
Done.
I think we're good.
Mm-hmm.
Aren't we?
Didn't know.
Oh, actually, the one thing that I do need to do, that I was gonna try to do, I'll do for next week,
is a letter to the legislators asking them to ratify the town meeting vote.
Right. Was that different than the special act that we talked about?
It is a special act of the legislature to ratify the vote of the town meeting.
To ratify the vote of the town meeting, but weren't we going to also do one because of the possible late arrival?
Because of the glitch.
That is it. It's to cure, um.
Oh, with the, with the, um, vote.
Yeah, well, actually Eloise is just about done with the official proceedings. Her and Barry are looking over the final, look over final draft two of Monday and Tuesday. So that will be appended to it and go off to the State House.
Okay.
So I will just give an informal heads up to the legislators, to their aides, just to say it's coming.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, the executive recruitment updates. Um, I had sent you an email, Mary, about two things that, um.
Steve needed.
Steve Rollins had asked for.
And a copy of an org chart.
Right.
So I sent you the police contract, and the only org chart I could find is what the Town Management Study Committee wanted the org chart to look like. But I don't think I found one that was status.
Current.
Yeah, quote. And also, since then, I think some things have changed with the merger of the, and the appointment of the treasurer collector, for example.
Right. Um, well, I can just.
I forwarded it to.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, he just asked me to get ahold of those things, and I will forward them to him. All right, I don't believe there was anything else for fire and EMS that I know of.
There was a request that the screening committee be given an update. I, I think it's been a while since they've been given an update.
The fire?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me to request that they be given one?
Yeah, either have them or the last email that you got or whatever, but, you know, just.
Received any for a while.
I'm not sure they even got the one that's saying that they were down to nine and they were doing the essays or whatever. They just would like to sort of know where things are in the process.
All right.
So however, we need to do that, we need.
So fire, that would be Brian Duggan, I don't know, Mary, do you want to just send them an email, say, Brian Duggan and Bob Craig are doing the fire? And just request, say that the screening committee was looking for an update.
Okay.
And I assume they, they have those names, correct? The screening committee.
They may not.
What, finalists? Some of you finalists?
No, no, the screening committee members.
I don't know, I can copy them on it.
Okay, that would be good. Uh, I don't remember if they do know.
Are you keeping the screening committee intact in its entirety?
We haven't done anything further.
All right, so, okay, all of them.
Uh, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we disbanded the, the first go-around, yeah, for the interim and then.
But they're the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
The same folks.
Right.
God, we don't want to do that again.
I mean, there's some feedback on it, but we'll just let them fall out as, as it does.
All right. Is there anything else that either of you have, new business, old business?
Yeah, I do just want to bring out that, and it's an ethics violation to use town, um, resources. I don't want to make a big deal, but I think that we need to start, um, maybe sending out a reminder before elections. Um, because the town of Berlin was going in and liking one of the candidates' stuff on the.
Oh.
So we need to make sure that that is not happening, and that's not the only violation, but this is one that's under our purview. Um, so maybe a reminder before elections that.
Well, we need to get together some kind of list of recommendations then.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, it's, it's a basic, you can't use town resources to endorse candidates.
What resources would that be?
That would be the town website, can't go on, on any candidate's page and like their stuff. Because that's using town resources to endorse a candidate.
I don't know, can I see that? No, that's not, that's not what that is actually, I don't think.
It, it actually is, but either way, I'm just asking for a reminder before future elections that, you know, town employees cannot use town resources for.
Yes.
And when you're on Facebook and you type in a town, it tags a town.
What that is though, Mary. You can, I don't want to argue about it, I'm just asking.
No one's arguing.
Yeah, we're, we're starting here. Um, so in the future, I think we need to send out a reminder before elections.
Hmm. Okay.
It could even be you were under, one thing when you thought you were under your personal one or whatever, but. Anything else?
We'll take a look at it. That's all. We'll bring in Mr. Agar, talk to him.
All right. So is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, then we have no need for executive session, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.